Thank you all for being here today. We appreciate it. We're excited to go over the maps with all of you. So forgive me as I look back over my shoulder. So introductions. My name is Kylie. I'm with Trepepi Smith. We are helping the city with its outreach efforts for the districting process. And I'm sure a lot of you have met Dr. Levitt, who is the city's demographer. So he's the one who helps with creating these maps here. So for today's goals, the first goal is for you to learn from the experts. Dr. Levitt is an expert in demography. He's here to answer any questions that you may have. So we're excited for you to learn today. And then we're also here to listen to you. You all are the experts in your community, and we want to hear from you on where you would like the districts to be drawn. We're also going to go over the focus maps in detail. As you can see, the five focus maps that we're focusing on today are behind us. So we'll have time later on today to go over those and see them more in detail. Then we also hope that you leave today empowered to give feedback, whether that's on sticky notes later today or at the next public hearing. A few reasons why you should care. As you all know, democracy works better when we're all involved. So thank you for being here. I did mention that you're the experts in your community. So again, we really just want to hear from you, and we want you to be able to provide your feedback to council as they make a decision. And then lastly, the districts determined in this process will be in place until 2031, when districts are ultimately redrawn based off population changes. And then a little agenda for today. Justin will give his presentation on the process rules and goals. And then he'll go, he'll do a deep dive of the focus maps. Then we'll have a time for question answers, to answer any questions that you may have. Then we'll also have a time where you can go up and look at the focus maps in more detail. And with that, I will pass it over to Dr. Levitt.
All right. Thank you. My name is Dr. Justin Levitt with National Demographics, and it's a pleasure to be here this afternoon to speak with all of you. Just one note that if you do have any questions, we are recording today, so we want to make sure to get them on the microphone. So let us know, and Kylie will come around to bring a microphone to you. So make sure we get your question in the recording. Otherwise, I may end up having to repeat your question. And I want to make sure we get it on the record, as close to it as possible. So for those of you who are new to this process or wondering what this public forum is about, the first couple of slides are just kind of an overview of what we are doing here today, and how we're doing it, what the process or timeline or timeframe is. Essentially, what the city of Irvine is doing is proposing a charter amendment for the March 2024 ballot. This amendment would increase the size of the city council from five members to seven, establish six by-district elections in those seven council seats. By district means that the city would be divided into six equally populated council districts. Each district would have a member living within that district, and people who live in that district would be the only ones getting to choose that member, as opposed to its current at-large system. The mayor would continue to be elected at large. So those are the essential pieces of this ballot measure. If approved, the first election for council districts would be in November of 2024. If voters do not approve the measure, then the city will keep its at-large system as it currently uses in November. As part of this process, the registrars, and actually state law, requires that we put the electoral lines on the ballot. So we have to go through this districting process now, because if we have this measure in March, we're not going to have time to draw lines before the deadline for candidate filing for that November 2024 election. So this is kind of what the registrar requires. We do this now. So get it on the map so that we can have the election in November. And now for district elections, the state actually sets out a basic timeline for us of when we have to finish specific parts of this process. It requires, I mean, it's kind of two stages. The first stage, which we started all the way back in April, we took testimony on neighborhoods and communities of interest. We held a series of workshops around the city back in April and May, and that led to the creation of our first round of draft maps, which we ended up having 45 maps, or 44, or yeah, 45 maps, 43 of which were submitted by residents of the community. And of those maps, the council then chose six focus maps. We went out in August to a series of five workshops. And at the September meeting, the council further narrowed it down to three focus maps. They also requested at that meeting that we come up with a couple of new maps, which we have today to show you. In addition to that, there is another window for you to submit maps or propose changes that ends next Friday, the 29th. So this is all in anticipation of getting the maps posted online on October 3rd, so they'll be ready for our council meeting on October 10th. At the October 10th council meeting, 6:00 PM, we'll have a public hearing. At that point, the council will select a map and a sequence of elections, which year each district holds its first election. And then that will be inserted onto the ballot language, and that'll be the first opportunity for the council to approve the language for that ballot measure in March of 2024. Assuming it does pass, the first elections would be held in November under these new lines, and these districts would be used through the 2030 election. And then in 2031, once we get results from the 2030 census, the city would redraw its boundaries to ensure that they remain in compliance with any requirements. So that's our basic timeframe here. We're looking toward our next meeting being actually the meeting where we select the final map. This is today, our last of our workshops. We had seven workshops starting back in August, or actually back in July. And we wanted to make sure we had workshops both after the July 11th hearing, as well as after the September 12th meeting. Because as we told people, the maps we have to show you today are by and large different from those we showed you back in August, because maps are, you know, this is a two-way process. As maps come in, as the council and community express opinions on the different maps, the maps do change over the course of this process. And that really brings us into, how do we think about the maps? And I'm just going to review briefly the redistricting rules and goals. These were the principles that we put out as the ideas you should think about when drawing district lines. They can also serve us in evaluating the different maps. We divide them into the three categories because they come from three different sources, and we kind of rank order them in series of priority. First being the federal requirements, then state law, and then things that are allowable according to the courts. The first column on the left, federal law, these are things that the Supreme Court tells us we must comply with. And the first is equal population. This is the one-person, one-vote principle. It's where the census data really comes into play. Each district has to have more or less the same number of total residents. So we take that total population count, divide by six, and we get that as our target population for each district. Now, this includes everyone. This includes children, this includes non-citizens, this includes people counted living in the UCI dorms. Everyone counted as part of that census count, counts to our total population count. Now, we don't have to be perfect. We don't have to get exactly the same number of residents in each district. Actually, congressional districts do. But for state and local governments, they allow this deviation, is what we call it, difference in population between the largest and smallest district. And that maximum difference is 10%. So all of the maps here today are under that 10% deviation. And most of the maps we've received as part of this process have met that criteria. I will say this can mean that some communities end up divided, because there's simply no way of keeping every single community together and meeting that 10% deviation maximum, particularly given how large some of our neighborhoods are. Under that, the Federal Voting Rights Act, race cannot be the only factor, or even the predominant factor, in the creation of a district. But it's one, but protected class communities, groups that have historically faced discrimination or barriers to registration and voting, have their rights protected and have to be considered alongside communities of interest and neighborhoods. When we talk about that in the middle column. And speaking of that middle column, this is the State's Fair Maps Act of 2019. The state gives us four criteria in this rank order to consider. The first criteria they list is contiguity. That's a fancy way of saying that the district has to have one outside border. You can't have a little bit of the district in Portola Springs and another part of the district down in UCI that are not physically connected to each other. As one court put it, "You must be able to walk or drive from one part of the district to every other part of the district without leaving the district." Underneath that, neighborhoods and communities of interest, this is where the central discussion happens. And as mentioned before, this is where we disagree the most. Neighborhoods are the fundamental building block of our districts, those areas that need to be kept together for the purposes of their fair and effective representation. That's how it's written in state law. Neighborhoods come together to form communities of interest around the shared issues, the shared problems, the shared values, the shared concerns. Things like area neighborhoods that share a common issue with the fire district, or whose children attend the same school, or have similar issues regarding development, or road work, or, you know, I could come up with so many different options here. And this is where we also disagree the most, because there's so many ways of thinking about these problems. Every city has their own communities of interest that are different from neighboring cities. And so this is why we have different maps here for us to look at. They all conceptualize these communities of interest differently. We'll talk through some of the communities of interest that some of these maps have in a second. But what we really are hoping we can understand from your feedback, from your testimony, is which communities need to be kept together for their effective and fair representation. Below that is following major boundaries. These are the following roads, waterways, and other natural barriers between districts. Rather than jogging through a neighborhood, we want to be able to say, hey, if you live north of this major road, then you're in District 1, and south in District 2, rather than kind of saying, well, if you have an odd-numbered address and you live on this side of the cul-de-sac, you're in District 1. But if it's an even number, you live in District 2. So to the extent feasible, that's the next priority. And then below that is compactness. The Fair Maps Act defines compactness as not bypassing one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. And this is clearly aimed at hooks and fingers, odd shapes that are not explainable by neighborhoods or other factors. And they are rank ordered for a reason. Sometimes communities, by virtue of their development, or especially if you're talking about canyons or other natural features, may look odd on the map. But to people who live in that neighborhood or community, it may be perfectly understandable why the line was drawn the way it was. And so that's something we're going to, we want to hear about as well. Which one of these maps best meets that compactness criterion? The third column, and I should mention one more thing about the Fair Maps Act, partisanship, political party registration, is something that is expressly prohibited from being a consideration. So whether we're talking about competitiveness or lack of competitiveness, those are not factors that we can consider. The third column are principles that courts have recognized as being valid to consider. And what this means is that they are rank ordered or prioritized below all of the federal and state criteria. But if we're looking at two maps that we think do a pretty good job, or an equally good job, according to all of the state and federal criteria, they can be used as sort of a tiebreaker, as you will. For example, future population growth. If one map does, we think does a better job of maybe dividing that future population growth across multiple districts to spread out the impacts of it. Or conversely, if we think that one does it better, to make sure one council member has, you know, more say, or, you know, more of a presence among that due growth, those are valid to consider in terms of, you know, maybe underpopulating or overpopulating a district a percentage or two. Similarly, respecting voters' choices, the principle that the voters of the city have elected a council, and that the decision to continue should be left to the voters, is something you can consider after and only after we've considered all the federal and state criteria. So that really brings us into the draft maps, and we're going to think about using those criteria, particularly the Fair Maps Act criterias of neighborhoods and communities of interest, in our first pass at the maps. And it's sort of like, once it meets that neighborhoods and communities of interest, then we move on to thinking about following the major roads, and then into competitiveness, or, I mean, compactness. Sorry, don't consider competitiveness. I just want to highlight the immense number of maps we've received from the community. Of our 60, I think we had 61 maps going into our last hearing, all but five of them were from residents of the community. And including five of our last six focus maps, and two of the three focus maps that the council chose at the last meeting are from residents of the community. And that's just an incredible showing, and really goes to highlight how, you know, there really is an opportunity for you, even today, to draw your own map. If you say, like, I like where this map starts, and you want to just take it that one step further to make it a better map, all of our focus maps are available as a starting point for drawing your own map online. And we're happy to talk about that later if you have any questions about that. So we do encourage you, even at this late point in the process, to continue to submit ideas or changes to the maps. We have, and we will show you two versions of the map. One version, I believe on the left, we have our planning areas. And on the right, we have a villages layer, so that we can show you both versions of the map, with both the planning areas and the villages on there. And there are some differences between the two. We have, like I said, three focus maps were chosen at the last meeting, maps 135, 148, and 151. 135 is the only focus map of the original six that was continued to this next hearing as a focus map. Now, I'll briefly talk about comparing and contrasting some of the different focus maps. And I'll start by just highlighting, all of our focus maps have some similar features. For example, all of them use Culver Drive as a border between UCI and Turtle Rock. And that's something that we heard very strongly from many community residents in our first round of workshops and hearings. And all of them incorporate that boundary into the focus maps. Where they really differ is, you know, in order to get to that 10% deviation, they all have some communities divided or split. They differ on how they do it and which ones, and sometimes for the reasons they do it. For example, 135 is a map that really was looking at dividing the Great Park, is all I can say. It divides the Great Park itself into four different districts. And that's really one of the features or highlights of this particular map. Again, this was submitted by a community resident and chosen by the council twice as a focus map. On the other hand, 148 keeps the Great Park together. They link neighborhoods from the north and the south, on the idea that this map, which does a lot of things, one of the things it does is create three districts with a strong Asian-American presence in districts 1, 2, and 3. And so this is, this is how you do it, essentially, is those districts 1, 2, and 3 we see in this map. In contrast, 151 follows different community boundaries. And in particular, some of the testimony that we heard early on, that was reflected in the submission statement from the author, were links between El Camino and Walnut, and El Camino and Northwood. And so this links those three communities together in District 3. We've seen, over the course of this process, that a lot of times, community members have provided information that may contradict each other. For example, just one, just one quick example is Cypress Village, where we've heard testimony that it has links to Northwood, and links that it has more in common with the Great Park. And that's the kind of question that really, you know, it's not a popularity contest, but it's something that we are soliciting that kind of feedback on. Where are the links between each neighborhood and its surrounding communities? What's the best way to represent a particular area? Now, those three maps, 151, 148, 135, were the three focus maps that the council chose. They also recognized, and I'll tell you, probably none of those three are going to be the exact map adopted by the council, because they requested other maps, and they've asked for other maps to be submitted by the residents of the community as well. One of the, NDC, put together two maps based on the council's request that we have to show you today, 162 and 163. In addition, I can tell you that in the last two days, we've received additional two maps from the community. We have not had the time to draw them in yet, but they'll be posted next week. So we're still receiving new maps, is kind of what I'm saying. And I'm sure that whatever map the council adopts in its final vote will reflect the testimony and the weight of the opinions that we've been hearing as we move through the process. 162 and 163 both came out of a request to merge the three northern districts from 148, so districts 1, 2, and 3 from 148, and the southern areas of 151. This map, 162, does that almost exactly. It just kind of takes those districts, puts them together, and in order to balance the population, Oak Creek and El Camino move into District 5. And we, you know, we basically, that's to balance the population between the districts. In 163, we were asked to look at an option that unites all of both West Parks and Woodbridge, and keep that district above the 405. And so that's where this map, 163, comes from, in order to accomplish that goal. This does result in a division of El Camino, which is one of our larger neighborhoods by population, and it's divided along Yale Avenue. We have seen other maps, and you'll see them as they get posted over the next couple of days, that say, take a different starting point. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully, you know, what I'd like to think is that one of those maps has the answer that we're all looking for as part of this process, whether it's the 162, 163, or the new maps that are coming in, even as we speak. We were also asked to compare some of the divisions and splits in the Asian populations between the districts. And so we can see here that all of the maps that we're looking at do divide some villages or communities. This is simply, you know, there was one map that didn't divide any, but it created very elongated districts in order to do that, including one that stretched all the way from Orchard Hills down into the West Park area, into West Park, actually. So in order to create more regularly shaped districts, we do have lines that divide communities. Some of them try to do it, like 148, and the 162, 163, at the 133 freeway or other major roads. Others, like 135, do jog through neighborhoods in a little bit more of a street-by-street kind of path. You see, there's also some differences in the number of districts where the Asian citizen voting age population, or eligible voter populations, as the court calls it, are above 40%. You know, we have some maps that have two districts with a very strong Asian vote, near 50%. And we have some maps, 148, 162, and 163, where we have three districts at about 44%, give or take, between the districts. And so this was something we were asked to look at and compare across the different maps. I mentioned the third highest district in 151, which we got a question about this morning, is at 39%. So it's just below the 40% threshold we were asked to look at. But, you know, this is something that we look at in terms, not just of our voting rights analysis, but in terms of how well do those lines reflect our community boundary. Because especially the way we should think about the Voting Rights Act here is that, you know, more or higher isn't necessarily better, but it needs to reflect the actual communities and of people who are living on the ground. And so I really encourage us to think about these numbers and splits in the context of our neighborhoods and communities. So we are, so, you know, for example, not all these divisions are the same size. One of the divisions in 151, for example, or even, I think, in one, you know, of the division of University Park, it's moving an apartment complex, one specific apartment complex, out of University Park into the neighboring district. Some of these divisions, on the other hand, like the division of El Camino Real in 163, are quite substantial. Literally, half of the community is in one district, and the other half is in the other. And so that's the kind of thing that differs between the maps. And so that really kind of, you know, brings us into, you know, providing, thinking about comments, thinking about how to let us, let the council know what you think about these maps. One of the things we have here today, and one of the things we're going to encourage you to do after the presentation, is we have some little sticky notes and pens. And I really want you to get into the weeds on the maps. Look at the details of the maps, look at the areas that work or don't work. Because I want to emphasize not just the negative, but also the positive, what works in a specific map, too. Write your feedback, and put it right on that area of the map. Right on the area that works, or right on the area that you don't like. And that's a really effective way of telling us, especially as we look at some of these maps coming in, that might take 148 or 151 as a starting point, and make adjustments. You know, is this adjustment acceptable or not acceptable? Well, if it concerns a district that you feel strongly works, then we might want to think about it one way. If it concerns an area that you think needs adjustment, we might think of that as a positive change. Now, before we get into that, I do have to say a couple of words about sequence of election. Sequencing of elections is a fancy way of saying, this is the order that the elections will be held in. Which districts will elect in 2024, and which in 2026? Now, because of the council expansion, we actually have to hold the elections for those new positions in 2024. But one of those seats will be a short-term seat. It'll have a two-year term, and then it will go on the 2026 election for a four-year term, and four years, every four years thereafter. And so this means that part of our analysis of the maps is thinking about which year each of the council districts will elect in. And that'll be part of the decision the council makes come, you know, October 10th. We also do, in addition to what we have available today, on our website, drawirvine.org, we have all of our mapping tools available. And we do have all of our focus maps as starting points. If you want to take a particular starting point, like 151 or 148 as a starting point, and draw, and make it better, you can do that on our online redistricting tool. We also have paper maps here today. I think they're on the table just outside the council chamber, that show you the populations of areas within the city. It's not just, they're sort of, for the big population areas, like Woodbridge, it's divided into smaller subareas. Just, you can see how much the population is in different parts of the city. Actually, this morning, somebody colored it in, just neighborhoods, not even a whole district map, just the neighborhoods she thought were important, and submitted it in person at our morning meeting. And so we encourage you to take that as well, and think about, you know, looking at that, to estimate even, what the population changes might be if we're looking at moving toward your preferred district alignment. Our website, drawirvine.org, continues to be up and running. I thought we had our slide there with our info on it, but I guess at the end. And we really encourage you to use our website, email us at districting, or districts@cityofirvine.org, and continue to reach out, especially after the new maps are posted. If there's something you're not seeing today, on October, at least by October 3rd, look at the maps online, and see if they, maybe there's a map that does a better job than any of the five maps we have here today. And so with that, I do want to kind of get into our Q and A session. So does anybody have any questions about anything in this presentation? And I see some questions, so we're going to get microphones over.
Yeah. Can you, do you know the population of, Irvine's about 300,000 people, right? And do you know the, the percentage of Asian?
So, that's an, that's an interesting question. The total population, so there's different, because there's different ways of thinking about it. For total population, Irvine is about, I know we have the, actually, let me just get the numbers, because I can quote you the real numbers.
Okay.
I'll just highlight that each map has a demographic spreadsheet as well, and the final column is our city totals.
Okay.
So the total, Irvine, it has 49% Asian-American by total population, and it is 37% by citizen voting age or eligible voter population.
Okay. And then white would be what percent?
34% white by total population, and 46% by citizen voting age, eligible voter.
Has anybody done, you know how you did the spreadsheet that showed the percentage of, percent of Asians in each? of, percent of Asians in each of the different maps? Has anybody done that with white?
It's right on the spreadsheets on the back of each map.
Okay. So we can kind of see that?
Yep.
If they're balanced for each population?
And that also includes African-American and Latino as well.
Okay, for all?
For all of them by total population here, and then by citizen voting age population in the next box down.
You just displayed Asian up there, because they're the largest, right?
Yes. For the Voting Rights Act purposes, we look at protected class communities specifically.
Okay.
And Asian-Americans are considered a protected class.
Whites are not, but they're still, but you still track them?
They're still included on our total demographics here.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, I'm Harvey Lissa, resident of Woodbridge, actually, since nineteen seventy-six. I have two points. One is, some of the districts put two sitting council members in the same district, which means at some point, they'll be running against each other. I think, even though it's not a legal requirement that they be in separate districts, I think it would, should be an absolute no-no to put two council members in the same district. That would represent disenfranchisement of tens of thousands of voters, which seems to be an absolute no-no. Now, what's even worse now, in the city council, we have two council members against two council members on many important issues, with the mayor being the swing vote. And as it turns out, two of the council members are supporting a map that pits the council members, the other council members against each other, which is one forty-eight and its successor, one sixty-three. University Park is combined with Gypsum Canyon. One council member lives in University Park, the other in Gypsum Canyon, puts them, puts them together. The other two council members, who don't want to be pitted against each other, are supporting one fifty-one, and it looks like one sixty-two also keeps them in separate districts. I think this is a very important issue, and I think the residents should be made aware of which maps do that, because you have to know the home addresses of the council members, and that's not something everybody is aware of. In fact, I was talking to somebody earlier about one of the maps, and was completely unaware that that was going on. I think each map should say whether it pits two council members together or not. The, the second item is in the village divisions, and I'm happy that you spoke, Dr. Levitt, to say that in one case, the division represents moving one apartment complex from one district to another, and that's hardly comparable to cutting off a quarter of Woodbridge, which map one thirty-five does, which represents about eight thousand people in that, in that one quarter, which is next to the part that I'm, that I'm in. So it would be good if the table that shows divisions would also indicate maybe the populations that are actually cut, cut off. And one of the other divisions actually represents cutting off a shopping center, which may have no, no voting population. That's also not an equivalent to dividing an actual population, with actual people living, rather than just the geographic area. It's very hard to tell on the maps which, which is which. It also would have been very helpful to have the street names highly visible on the maps. The only thing that's obvious is Culver Drive, and I can always tell that, because I know Woodbridge has Culver on one side, Jeffrey on the other, wherever I sent the drive on the top. Other than that, it, it's very difficult to figure out what, what street is, is what. I know on, the online version, you can zoom in and see all the streets, but you don't see the streets on this level of, of mapping that we have here.
We do have the street names on the blow-up maps on that and there, so please do, do check the big maps. Unfortunately, on this screen, it's very hard to see and things run together very quickly. But we do have them on these maps. We don't have them on the, all the, we don't have them on the PDFs here because people were having a hard time reading both the street names and the community names, and we wanted to prioritize putting the community names on the map. But we do have the big maps here today to look at that. And as you mentioned, we do have the interactive review map, where you can search for addresses, zoom in and out, and really see more detail.
That's really all I have to say. Most important issue is not to put two council members in the team. That's one forty-eight and one sixty-three, it looks like its successor.
We live in the Great Park, and I'm noticing on one map, I'm a little disturbed about map one thirty-five cutting the Great Park up into, it looks like, one, two, three, four different districts. You're just, not you personally, I'm saying, that map seems to really do the worst damage to keeping the villages together.
Yes, and we, we have, we definitely noted that on the table. This was drawn by a resident of the community, and it was a direction from the council to include it as part of our focus maps. But we hope that you'll write your feedback and post it right on that map, right on the area that you think is the problem, right in the Great Park.
Hi, my name is Pam. I actually have two questions. The first is, do maps include the future development per the general plan in the districting of this map?
So, we are required by law to use the latest census data. And so we use the twenty-twenty census data as the state requires for these numbers. Now, we, of course, can, you know, we, of course, have talked about where future growth is likely to occur over the course of the next decade, and that can be factored in in terms of that. But in terms of our ten percent deviation, we have to use the latest census counts, even if by 2030, that could mean very big differences between the districts.
The second question also has to do with standards or qualifications used. Was there any consideration given to either average income of the district or the cost of real estate? I mean, have you been keeping all of the apartments in lowercase, or lower-cost homes in a district and incorporated most of the higher rent, as we say, in a district?
So, our spreadsheets do include information about income and housing, and I, I would encourage everyone to go look at those and how they're separated out by district. It is true that every map has one district that is over eighty percent renters, and over eighty percent, you know, it's a very, in a very, and that, of course, I mean, if you look at any of the maps, that's going to be the map that includes UCI, University Town Center, and the IBC. And that's mostly multifamily housing, and so that one looks very distinct compared to the other districts. Now, communities of interest, in terms of how we've looked at communities of interest, we certainly have looked at that as a factor. Many people brought it up in their submission statements of their maps. For example, we had a map in the first go-around in July, where the goal was stated, we wanted to create at least four districts where renters constituted a majority. And that was something that they paid a lot of attention to when drawing the lines. It's part of our discussion of communities of interest, absolutely. In terms of priority, I don't think it outweighs other priorities, like keeping neighborhoods together, communities together. But it's certainly something that does factor in, and I think by virtue of keeping some neighborhoods together, and maybe those are natural communities of interest, most of the maps do end up with, with some substantial differences between them, in terms of the percentage that rent, the percentage that are, live in multifamily housing. And that's, thus, in part, because some of the districts, like the one that includes the Great Park and the Spectrum in most, in one forty-eight, that's a much newer district overall than, say, District Four, in that same map that includes Woodbridge and Oak Creek. And so that does factor in.
I'm sorry, I have one last question.
Sure.
I promised two. Now here's number three. Could you please list the various populations by either ethnicity or culture that were considered specifically, like you showed us the Asian, and you mentioned black and white and Latina? What else?
So on our demographics table, those are the four groups we have: white, Asian, Latino, and African-American. We use the census categorization here, and specifically, we do that because that's what the Voting Rights Act directs us to use.
Just follow up on that. I notice in our retail centers, as our population changes, so do the stores, and I see a lot of stores that are welcoming and looking for what we might call East Indian, or, I'm not even sure what the proper term is. And I don't see that called out in the list you just read.
Sure.
Are they considered Asians?
So the census classify, the census actually classifies every ethnicity in the world just about into one of their groups. And, and this is, this is quite controversial, and they've written a proposal to introduce new categories, and so far, none of them have been successful in the, since, since the addition of Latino as a separate category in nineteen ninety-one. Now, everything up through, anything from Europe, the Mediterranean Basin, or the Middle East, all the way into Afghanistan, is classified by the census as non-Hispanic white, or just white.
Say it again?
Everything from Europe, the Mediterranean Basin, and the Near East or the Middle East, up to Afghanistan, as far east as Afghanistan.
Is considered?
White.
Okay.
And Asia, and Asian includes the Indian subcontinent, Pakistan, India, Sri Lanka, all of that would be considered Asian by the census categorization. That is one concern that many Asian-Americans have raised, particularly in cities with as diverse an Asian population as Irvine has. And certainly, some residents have talked about that in the context of the maps we've drawn, in saying things to deprioritize just the raw number for a particular district, because in many cases, it does reflect more diverse communities. In terms of communities of interest, we can focus in on Chinese, or Korean, or Indian, or Pakistani, or other ethnic groups, in fact, any cultural group. And that's something that we've heard of with respect particularly to the Korean community. We've had a couple of people come out and talk about specific landmarks that are important to the Korean community to be kept together. And that's part of our discussion of communities of interest. As the, as the Supreme Court has said, a district drawn solely on the basis of race, or even predominantly on the basis of race, is not a valid reason alone by itself to adopt a district.
Okay. Just one last comment, then. It seems, for those of us who are white-bred and are learning to, because of Irvine's idea of having an inclusive city, which is wonderful, I'm not sure how many would consider the East Indians or Near Indians, the mosque is up in north part of Irvine, to be similar in community and goals and culture as Asian. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gene Kaplan. I'm an eighteen-year resident of Irvine. Considering the, the basis of founding this city, the concept of individual villages, semi-autonomous villages, it's, it's become a very, very significant factor for the residents of this city. In discussing this with a lot of people over the last couple of months, I came to realize that even after eighteen years, I had very little concept of what villages existed where. This doesn't necessarily apply to you trying to redistrict other cities. But in this case, what I did is I found a map on the city website, and it very well delineated all the individual villages. I added in some very significant landmarks, like the freeways and the major north, south, and east-west streets and so forth. It allowed me to have a very, it allowed me to have a better feeling as to what I was looking at when I looked at all the maps that had been submitted. With the technology being as good as it is today, in a case like this, I think it would be nice if you could create a, like an overlay map using something like this, that could be applied over your maps here. It's confusing when you look at all the writing on there. If you just broke up the map in color sections, as you have, maybe putting in major landmarks, and then created an overlay map that could be electronically placed over the maps that we're looking at, it gives you a much better idea as to where the individual boundaries are relative to the individual villages. And I know it would have helped me.
And we do have our interactive review map online that does just that on the internet. And so we do have that available on our website, drawirvine.org, on the draw map.
I missed that, then.
Hi, my name is Jane. I've lived in Irvine since nineteen seventy-three, so I was here when they created the concept of villages. And I also moved from one part of Irvine, which was the El Camino area, to the Turtle Rock area. So I kind of understand that concept from an experiential point of view. And the map of one fifty-one, I was impressed by their ability to keep that whole area, College Park Colony, and then on to the other side of the five, which is what's, I think, termed Old Northwood. That's where I lived. There was no Northwood when I first lived in Irvine. So we identify with each other in that whole area where the district is, and so I was pretty impressed by that ability to keep that area together. And then, and, and, you know, where I live now, in Turtle Rock, it's, you know, that whole new area, Quail Hill and all that, it's, it's, it's geographically close, you know, from a lot of places. You could see one area to the other, almost, just the way the landscape is. So it, it, it's, it's good when you, when you want to keep in mind the concept of villages, that it really goes to the core of what, how Irvine was created and how it grew. And so I think it's critically important to keep that concept when you present these maps, because people who've lived here for a while, even if they haven't lived here for a while, everybody, everyone understands the concept of village. So in a big area like Irvine is right now, it, it draws it down, and that's why I think this districting is going to help out, because the population has grown so much.
Well, I encourage you, I thank you for your feedback, and I encourage you to make sure to leave a Post-it note or a comment card today before you leave. Sorry, my throat is a little dry.
Hi, I'm Doug Elliott. I live in the Lower Peters Canyon neighborhood, which is northwest Irvine, adjacent to Tustin. I am the author of map one thirty-six, which was the basis for one forty-eight, so I wanted to respond to my friend Harvey a little bit on the logic of that. I was drawing those lines with the intent of following all of the rules and the criteria, using obvious boundaries, such as freeways, toll roads, and such, whenever possible, as district boundaries. I think that doesn't always work, but I did the best I could with that. I also wanted to preserve communities of interest and traditional villages, and also to maximize Asian-American opportunities. So that's the way I went into it, and so ending up with two incumbents in the same district was a consequence and not, not the design that I went into it with. I appreciate Harvey's concern that he'd rather not have that. Sometimes you can't avoid it. Anaheim, before they went to districts, I believe, all of their council members lived in the Anaheim Hills. So what are you going to do about that? Sometimes it's impossible. Here we have two council members who unfortunately live very close together, so that's the way it came out with one forty-eight. I did draw a new map to try to resolve that problem, which is one of the ones I think Dr. Levitt mentioned. And it's almost exactly the same as one sixty-two, except that I accommodated the student's concern. And it's almost exactly the same as 162, except that I accommodated the students' concerns and moved Rancho San Joaquin into, into the university district. So, I tried to kill two birds with one stone involving concerns that had been raised. So, that'll be in the hopper for consideration, and I hope one way or the other.
That was one of the two maps I mentioned that we have received, and that will be posted next week.
I'm very concerned that Dr. Levitt would place both council members, Larry Agran and Mike Carroll, in the same district, knowing full well that this will cause a major problem as only one of them can be, can win during an election. His map, 148, is supported by a council member, Tammy Kim, who has called Larry Agran a liar many times. Larry is not a liar. Larry is running for mayor in 2024 and is supporting Map 151, as am I and a lot of other people, which is a far superior map than Map 148.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other, any other questions, any other statements, any other things you'd like to put on the record or say before we kind of wrap this up? And when I say wrap it up, we're not going to go away right away. After we have our Q&amp;A session, the maps will continue to be available for a few minutes, or until 3:30, whatever comes first. And we're here to answer questions, we're here to, you know, to be here as a resource. We do ask that if you would want to leave your comments today, you know, we would ask, you know, to do that. If not, you can always go to the website, drawirvine.org, and leave your comments that way. And if, in person is more your thing, we do have our upcoming public hearing, October 10th at 6:00 PM, here in the Great Hall. We've been starting on time. And so, I just want to make sure to get this information up as we get our last round, our last chance for questions or comments, and we've got one over here.
Okay, just one quick thing. I, I live in West Park II, and I just noticed that a lot of the maps kind of consider West Park II as a throwaway, and they stick us in Orchard Hills, and kind of, it's a wraparound. It's like, okay, but we really don't have a lot in common with Orchard Hills, and is there any, any way to work around that? Because it, it really leaves us in a bad, a lot of the maps are doing it.
So...
Yeah.
So, we do, we do see...
Some, some get rid of that, but I just see a lot of maps, you know, kind of reaching around and, and...
You know, we've been talking about villages. West Park is one of those really interesting villages, where it is and it isn't a village depending on when you're looking at the map. Because depending on, like, at first, West Park II was considered a separate village by the Irvine Company, and at some point, they merged the two together to create a master, you know, West Park area. It's like some of the neighborhoods have changed names over time in their villages. For example, the Irvine Company is now calling it Harvard Square, even though that's one specific development within the greater Walnut community. But their website now labels that whole area, the Walnut area, as Harvard Square. And we know that, like, as we've been putting together these village boundaries with the help of people from the Irvine Company and other developers who have worked in the city, that depending on when you're looking at the map, the lines, the lines are different, the names are different. And so, we're trying to consider all of this as we're looking at the boundaries, through looking at the lines. Now, I would definitely say, we see in 151, and there are similar maps to it, 144 and 148, or, sorry, 146, other maps that link it with Walnut, link it to El Camino Real. There are some maps, I don't believe any of our first-round focus maps did this, but certainly, like 163, combine it with West Park and link it with Woodbridge. And so, that's going to be one thing that I would love to hear, as a resident, your feedback on. What, which, what solution works the best for, for your neighborhood?
Well, yeah, I, I know they're, they're doing it for population balancing, I guess, you know, but it kind of sucks for us in Woodbridge, because Orchard Hills, I mean, to me, they're probably in a fire hazard zone, and, and we're kind of not, we're not in that situation, and so much.
Yes.
I want to point out that a few days ago, when I checked the city's website, it showed the six focus maps rather than the three focus maps, so it's behind the times. Is there any way to get the city to update their, their website, so it's really up to date?
We will, we will work with our web team to make sure that it's showing the three focus maps. I, I know that we did change it after the last, yeah. It should be up to date now. And it should have the two new maps on there as well. And next week, we're going to be posting the two new maps we've received in the last week. So, if you wait a couple of days, probably by midweek, we'll have those maps up. Well, thank you so much for coming, and please feel free to stick around, and please do leave your feedback. If not here today, please find us online at drawirvine.org. Thank you so much for coming.